Can you all hear me in there?
How are you?
It is one o'clock, and I would like to call to order this meeting of the Douglas County Planning Commission. At this time, I would like to ask those present to turn off their cell phones, at the very least their ringers. And I would like to notice that there is a quorum of the Planning Commission present. Representative Jim Slade is not here. He has texted that he is on his way from the Reno Airport. After we do the public comment, approval of the agenda, and approval of the minutes, we will take a short break if it looks like he will be here shortly, and we will play that by ear. At the moment, I would like to ask Ken to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We just salute the flag of the United States of America and the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. At this time, we would do public comment. Public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Planning Commission. It is requested that members of the public hold their comments on the agenda items to when they are considered. If content is disruptive or disrespectful to commissioners, staff, or members of the public, the individual will be told to stop speaking and sit down. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. I will ask the first speaker to please come to the podium, write your name on the list, and state it for the record. First speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Ellie Waller. I have a general question. When a use is added to the zoning designation, like has been approved for what we're going to talk about today, does it actually get updated, or is it part of the approval process? I know we don't answer questions today, and it is in my comments and worthy to say what piqued my interest was that the planning area in the Douglas County codes, it says policies and programs will not be modified by a specific plan. So again, I'm asking a general question. Do all specific plans that come in with zoning changes like this change code? It says all existing Douglas County code requirements, design guidelines, policies, and programs apply and are in effect regarding that planning area. So again, just for future, it would be nice to know what triggers and how a code is changed to add a use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Next speaker.
My name is Victoria Frye. I am the president of Alpine View State's Property Owners Association. I'm just here, it's my first meeting, to see what you guys do, and I wanted to thank you for allowing us to be here in an open forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. Anyone else? Seeing no one else rise for public comment, I will close public comment. And Lucille, do you want to respond to Ellie's question about code changes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Lucille Rayo, Community Development. I believe Ellie was speaking to the change to the matrix within the North Douglas County specific plan. As presented to you in July, that change was aligning with code. So that use was already allowed in Douglas County code in multifamily residential, and it was just aligning with code. If I misunderstood her question, then I apologize. I'm not quite sure what she was asking then.
Well, since we don't have back and forth with public comment, we can look at the minutes next meeting, and if there's something else, we can respond at that time. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Yeah, if I may, Sam Taylor, for the record, Douglas County DA's office. In response to Ellie's question, I think what she was trying to get at is, with an amendment to the specific plan, does it automatically update code? And my response would be, in the particular instance where the North District specific plan amendment that was presented to the Board of County Commissioners at their August 4th meeting, what that had was the effect of only modifying and amending the specific plan itself. It did not amend Douglas County code, per se, because the zoning, the underlying zoning, preexisted the application for the amendment to the specific plan.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Tanya, have we heard anything back from Colleen about Mr. Slade?
We have not.
Okay, at this time, with the approval of the commission, I would like to take a 10-minute break to 1:15. If Mr. Slade has not arrived by then, we will begin our public hearing.
Madam Chair, may I suggest that we go ahead and approve the agenda and approve the minutes, get those out of the way, and then we can hold after that those two action items?
Okay, thank you. Mark, if you will, I would ask that there is a motion to approve the agenda.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I would ask for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the July 12th, 2020 minutes.
We have a motion by Mark.
Second.
We have a second by David. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I understood Mr. Nindrep correctly, it's 2020?
2022.
So 2022, is what I think you meant to say.
Motion is amended to reflect that change. We have a second by David. Is there any discussion other than Bryce's correction? No discussion. Motion and a second, a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, at this time, since Mr. Slade is not here, again, we will break until 1:15, and if Mr. Slade has not arrived by then, we will begin our public hearing. Thank you. It's 1:15. I would like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission back into session. We have received notification that Jim Slade is about 15, 20 minutes out. Does the Planning Commission want to hold the meeting until Mr. Slade arrives? Or do we want to continue, open the public hearing, and then find out if Mr. Slade, when it comes to a vote, feels that he has heard enough of the presentation that he feels able to cast a vote? Kirk?
Madam Chair, if I can read into the record for those people in the audience and who may be watching what the bylaws of the Planning Commission say. This is Item 7 in the Planning Commission bylaws entitled Decision Making, 7.1.5 Absences. A Planning Commission member who is absent from any portion of a hearing conducted by the Planning Commission may vote on the matter at the time it is acted upon, provided the member has listened to a recording of the entire portion of the hearing from which he/she was absent, has examined all of the exhibits presented, and states for the record that the member deems himself/herself to be as familiar with the record and with the evidence presented at the hearing as he/she would have been had they personally attended the entire hearing. So to me, it is very clear that a member has to either be in person and listen to the entire portion of the hearing or listen to it in another fashion, in some way, shape, or form. And since Mr. Slade is not here now, I would suggest that we perhaps allow him another 15 minutes or so. But I do know that there are members who have other matters that they need to attend to later in the day. So I think it would be appropriate also to hear from other members of the Planning Commission who may feel that we need to move forward at a time specific.
Other discussion? Bryce?
Madam Chair, I've unfortunately found myself in the same situation that Mr. Slade is in. You know, through no fault of mine or his, it's just you have other commitments. And in that particular situation, I was not able to attend the entirety of the meeting. The meeting proceeded. I just kind of think that's the luck of the draw, I think, out of respect for those members that are here, that we continue.
Yes, I echo Bryce's reasoning, and I would like to add that it's also, we want to be very courteous to the public, and they're here to hear an agenda item, and I think we should move forward.
Ken?
I think we should continue the meeting.
David?
I'm okay either way, so.
You're so easy. And Kirk, you want to continue?
Madam Chair, I would prefer to wait at least 10 more minutes, but I recognize that other members have a difference of opinion and would respect the views of the majority.
I believe out of respect for the public that we continue. So we will continue and see what time Mr. Slade arrives. Not knowing what the traffic conditions will be through Carson or on 395, we have no idea what time he will actually arrive. And then, when it comes time for a vote, we will query him and see how comfortable he is with voting at the end. But I do believe that we do have a duty to the public, and it's important that we respect that. So Lucille, you may begin your presentation after I read the introduction. For possible action, a discussion on a request for a special use permit, DP 22-0104, to allow the use of a news, nope, is that the right one? No, it's not. Is it? I don't see SUP. There we go. Discussion on a request for a special use permit, DP 22-0104, to allow the use of an independent congregate senior living community and nursing and a convalescent residential care facility in the MFR, Prehens Multifamily Residential and Prehens Zoning District in the North Douglas County specific plan in the Indian Hills/Jax Valley Community Plan. The subject parcel is located south of Topsie Lane and east of Highway 395 and owned by Riverwood Partners LLC, Prehens APN 1420-06-701-009 and Prehens. Lucille Rayo presenting.
Madam Chair, before Lucille starts her presentation, I have a disclosure to make. I did have a private conversation with Chris Baker of Manhart Consulting, who is assisting the applicant on this project. We talked briefly about some questions I had about the traffic information that was presented, and I intend to ask those questions in public so that all members are afforded the same information that I received privately. So when we get to that point of the discussion, we'll be fully versed in the information I asked him to provide me.
Thank you very much, Kirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Lucille Rayo, Community Development. The project is located in the North Valley, Douglas County North, sorry, North Douglas County Valley. I keep saying Valley. I apologize. North Douglas County specific plan, it's on the north end of Douglas County. There's multiple zonings within the North Douglas County specific plan. This project specifically will be within the multifamily residential zoning district. The area that we're talking about is starred on the zoning map there. So as you may recall, on July 12th, we were before you for an approval on the amendment to the North Douglas County specific plan, allowing a change to the use matrix for independent congregate senior living and a nursing convalescent residential care facility. And then on August 4th, that was brought to, that amendment was brought before the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners, and that was also approved. This was the matrix that was in, that is in this packet, as well as in the packet that came before you in July. So the use is approved. And just to show you that it coincides with Douglas County code, multifamily residential zoning, special use is required for both the uses that they're asking for today. And these are the definitions for the nursing convalescent or residential care facility and independent congregate senior living. One of them, the first one, nursing convalescent care, provides 24-hour care. It's within a facility that's not, does not meet a definition of family. It provides some level of skilled nursing, and it will, it's basically more of a hospital environment. And then the independent congregate senior living community, his independent living community, it may have dwelling units and apartments. It's designed for adult population 55 and older, and some supportive services, such as meals, housekeeping, home health. And then there's common facilities associated with that, such as a clubhouse, pool, health facilities, all on site. This is, this is from the special use permit section of code 2604030. I just wanted to kind of go through these, so you're familiar. So the status of especially permitted uses. So A is the designation of a use in a land use district as a specially permitted use. That's what we're talking about today. Does not constitute an authorization or assurance that the use will be approved. That's why we're here today, for you to look at it and approve or deny it. Approval of a special use permit must authorize only the use for which the permit is issued. No use authorized by the special use can be enlarged, extended, increased, or relocated. So basically, if they wanted to change this project in any way, if they wanted to say, you know, we want to add another building, or we want to change the use completely, the special use permit, if it was approved today, would not apply. They would have to come back, and we'd have to present this to you again as a different project. So they couldn't change it, enlarge it, extend it in any way without coming back for additional approval. Development of the use must not be carried out until the applicant has secured all permits and approvals required by the title, Title 20. So basically, what we're saying is an SIP, a building permit, design review, which is the next phase, and then any state or federal agencies to run the facility. So this is an architectural rendering of what the buildings will look like. the buildings will look like. And another elevation. So I know there was some questions as to what is the maximum height. Maximum height is 35 feet in the multi-family residential zoning district, and that is what they're proposing. So here's the site plan and the landscape plan, included this, just to show you what the overall site would look like. It's important to note that dwelling unit has the meaning as defined in Appendix A. So for the purposes of this, a dwelling unit does not include timeshares or other fractional ownership of a dwelling unit, such as a residential care facility, nursing home, or other facility designated for the group care of its residents. So the assisted living and the memory care unit would not require any kind of growth management. If they decided they wanted to put apartments in the independent living care section, then that would require. But as far as I know, is the way the project has been presented to us, they are not, they're not going to be called dwelling units, they will not be kitchens, there might be wet bars in the unit. So I just wanted to be clear about that. And if there was any discussion, we can certainly talk about that. If there were any questions, we can certainly talk about that. This is the overall site plan. This is the area that there's been some questions about from the public regarding entrance off of 395. So we'll be talking about this, I'm sure, when it comes to public comment questions, and then if you have questions of staff as well. So there's also some questions about parking, and I just put this little snippet from code up here. So the nursing convalescent or residential care facility parking requirement is one for every three patient beds. And then the independent congregate senior living is one covered parking space per living unit, plus one guest parking space for every four units. Typical residential zoning would require two covered parking spaces, so this is only one for this type of use. Okay, the findings have been met for this special use permit. Staff and the applicant have met the findings, and those can be found on packet pages 37 to 40. We did receive some public comment. Staff believes the findings can be made in the affirmative for the requested special use permit, and we are recommending approval of development application, DP 220104, a request for a special use permit to allow independent congregate senior living community nursing convalescent residential care facility in the multi-family residential zoning district in the North Douglas County specific plan and the Indian Hills/Jacks Valley Community Plan, subject to the findings, conditions of approval, the staff report, presentation, and public comment. Questions?
Are there questions for Lucille at this time, or would you like to hear from the engineer? Oh, excuse me, I would like to put on the record that Mr. Slade has arrived, and he snuck in about 1:25. Welcome, Mr. Slade.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I apologize for my tardiness. This trip with my wife to visit both of our families and my college reunion was planned months before I was appointed to the Planning Commission. I originally was going to arrive back today, but I was miraculously able to change my arrival theoretically to last night. But the plane into Denver was very late, and I was not able to make my connection, much to my disappointment. So I got here as quickly as I can. Thank you for your patience. I do have some questions for staff. I hope I didn't miss too much. I did read the packet pretty carefully, including all of the staff recommendation. May I proceed? Thank you. Looking at the title of this item, which you've already read into the record, in last month, we were only changing the use matrix, as we understood, even though it was some confusing to some people ahead of time, and even during the meeting when they kept addressing the actual conceptual plan. This time, personally, I'm still a little confused, because this is a discussion on whether to allow these uses in MFR zoning district. And it's not clear to me whether we are approving the idea of that being done, or whether we are being asked to approve the specifics of what's still presented as a conceptual plan with all of the conditions. And so I'll let you address that first, and then I have some follow-up questions.
Thank you, Member Slade. For the record, Lucille Rayo, Community Development. So the project, as far as we know, the project is moving forward. They will be bringing in a, presenting a design review for us to review in more depth. For all intents and purposes, yes, this project is something that you will be looking at as a whole. So any discussion or conditions that you wanted to place on it would be for the actual project itself, not necessarily just the use. Even though we are here for a use, it is for the project itself. So the buildings that you see, the use that we're discussing, it's for the project.
Right. Even though I didn't think that was clear in the title, I appreciate the clarification. So will the Planning Commission have other opportunities as their plan goes from being conceptual to being more realized? Will we have additional opportunities to put on additional conditions, or is this our one and only bite at the apple?
For the record, Lucille Rayo, Community Development. This is your opportunity to comment or condition it.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, first of all, I apologize, Lucille, that I didn't, I meant to contact you ahead of time with some of my questions, but I was digitally challenged the last few days. And my tablet that I had with me could not get me into either my email or my county's website. So I would have asked you some of these questions before, but here we are. You know, I think to the public and to the Planning Commissioners, first of all, the open meeting law requires that the title, which is what appears in the agenda itself, is presented to the public and to everyone else, needs to be clear and complete. And secondarily to that, I think most people, we look to the staff presentation, the staff agenda item and their presentation on it to clarify any greater details. And the applicant, they provide a lot of color for that. We understand that they are biased because they are the applicant. We understand that. That doesn't mean that, I'm not suggesting they put falsehoods in here or anything like that, but they have their own bias, which we understand. But we expect the county to be more balanced in their presentation and try to present all sides of the issues.
Excuse me, Jim. It, I don't understand what that has to do with the special use permit itself.
Okay, well, for starters, I don't believe that the title is, as required by the open meeting law, is clear and complete. The way I would have expected an item like this in the past to appear would be to indicate in the title so that it's clear and complete to the public and whoever else looks at this. I would expect something with a little more detail, something like 130 congregate living units and 130 nursing in the MFR zone on a 10.53 acre parcel as part of a 67.13, 10.53 portion of a 67.13 acre parcel. And I did not find, that is not in the title. And to be all, to be honest, I don't find that, those numbers anywhere in the staff report. The first time that I noticed that the 10.353, I'm thinking, the whole time I'm reading your presentation, written presentation, I'm thinking, oh, we're talking about the whole parcel. And only when I get to page 49, where the applicant is making his presentation, do I run into the number that says, oh, this is just a 10.53 acre parcel, portion of that parcel, which has not been identified by size either, until the applicant mentions that on the following page, as a 67.13 acre parcel. So I find that disappointing. And I guess that's, I guess there's no real question there, except I'm wondering why those numbers are not, A, in the title, and B, at least somewhere in the staff report.
Jim, that's more appropriate to have a conversation with staff outside the room, not for here.
Madam Chair, if I may. Yes, Sam Taylor, for the record, Douglas County DA's office. I would just like to note from the record that I do believe that the title as presented and as read aloud in this room, and also as presented on the agenda, is more than sufficiently clear to give the members of the public a clear and complete understanding of what is being discussed here today, which is, one, a special use permit for congregate senior living, and also convalescent resident care facility. And it also gives a location where that is at. There is no requirement under the O, or the NRS, to have specifics to the point where it's just grinding down into specific details. That is not required for the OML. All that is required is for people to understand that, one, you're talking about a special use permit, two, for what type of facility, and three, where is it located? That is all that's required for the purposes of the OML.
Thank you. I have one more question. It says the financial impact on the county will be nil. Is the county not being asked to build any of the roadways or any of that? Is that all going to be paid for by the applicant?
For the record, Lucille Rayo, Community Development. That's correct. The burden is on the applicant, is on the, yeah, is on them, not the county.
And one final question. I guess this is as good as time as any to ask staff, because this is our opportunity to ask you questions. In 20.664.157A, where it says, "The density of units shall be determined with a special use permit," that's all it says. It doesn't go into any detail at all of who determines that, or how it's determined, or whether the applicant just gets to pick a number and we go with it. Or can you lend any color to what your interpretation of that part of the county code is?
For the record, Lucille Rayo. Yes, in fact, I printed it off, too, in case there were questions about that, because I found that odd myself. So in the multi-family residential zoning district, 16 dwelling units per acre is what is allowed. They are not proposing at this time, at least what they submitted to us, that it's considered dwelling units in terms of having kitchens, because that's the definition. When we look at, if someone was to come in for, let's say, for example, someone built a house, and then they want to build, oh, I don't know, an art studio or something in the backyard, do we look at that as an accessory dwelling? Is there a kitchen in there? That's how we look at it. If there's no kitchen, and the kitchen, there's a definition, is there a stove? Is there cooking facilities? So if there are no cooking facilities, it's no kitchen. If it's no kitchen, it's not a dwelling. So, to answer your question, which I'm having a hard time answering, I would say that following code for multi-family residential would be 16 dwelling units per acre. If I was on the Planning Commission, that's what I, that's how I would view it. I don't have an answer for you as to how you should answer that if you were asked to, how many dwelling units? You know, how many, what's the density, which would be dwelling units? I don't have an answer for that. Yeah, it does seem odd the way the code is written. I agree with you. And maybe, I'm sorry, and maybe our deputy DA would be able to answer that. Do you have another question?
No, thank you for that clarification. It is confusing, and I understand a little bit better now, but thank you. I know more questions.
Thank you. Other questions at this time? Mark?
Yes, Lucille. So we have a special use permit, and basically, I look at it as we have the independent congregate senior living community, and then we have the nursing home convalescent residential care facility. So I'm assuming those are the two separate buildings. So if the parcel is split in the future, at the time of the split, do you count the parking spaces for each, I guess, each building to make sure that they're in? Go ahead.
For the record, Lucille Rayo. Yes, and that's a great question. I'm going to let the applicant speak to this, but I believe that their plan was to have each building on a separate parcel. And, yes, so if something happened and they sold off a building, let's use that as an example, they would have to come to us for a building permit if they were going to turn those into dwelling units. And at that time, that's when we would review it, through design review, for parking, so that it meets code or any other items that would be required for that type of use. So through the design review process, that's when we would review it.
Okay, just one quick follow-up. So when you're looking at the design review, you are looking at the project as a whole, not individually. So if they split it in the future, then they have to meet all of the setback requirements, all of the landscaping requirements individually, correct?
That's correct. So let's say, for example, they're going to do this project on one parcel today. We would look at it, we would view it, we make sure it meets everything from open space, parking, landscaping, elevations, all of that. A year from now, they say, we want to, we want to subdivide this property. We want to put this on this use over here and this use over there. We would also look at it with the land division to see if it met code. But they would still have to meet parking, they would still have to meet setbacks. I think Jeremy might have, do you have something you want to add? I think Jeremy does.
Jeremy Hutchings, County Engineer. Yeah, I think, the only thing I want to add that potentially they could do some sort of agreement between each other to make sure the project satisfies it as a whole, rather than individually, Mark. So you, you might have some parking on another parcel that is allowed to be used for a separate parcel by through an agreement between the two parcel owners. So just to clarify that, that it does happen on some projects.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Does the applicant like to come up, or you're the traffic representative? The applicant? We have so many representatives here. Jim, introduce yourself, please.
I will. You do, you're right, we do have people to answer any questions you have. Good afternoon, Chair Casey and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Karen Downs. I'm with Manhart Consulting, and I'm here representing the applicant on this project. So Lucille went over the project location, but I'll just add that it's at the north end of Douglas County, and within the North Douglas County specific plan. The master plan designation is multi-family residential, and the zoning designation is multi-family residential, and it meets the North Douglas County specific plan designation as well as multi-family residential. The request today, again, following last month's specific plan amendment that you heard and recently approved, this application is for the special use permit to establish the uses that we've been talking about, the independent congregate senior living community, and nursing convalescent and residential care facility in the MFR zone. And then here is the proposed project, and I'll talk a little bit more about the use today. It's a senior living project, and it includes, in this project, there's three different kinds of uses. There's independent senior living, it's 130 units, that's the building on the, on my right, that has centralized dining and activities, but generally a little more independence. There's also, on the left, there's 95 units of assisted living, and that provides some additional assistance with daily tasks and other services as needed. Also, the centralized dining and activities. In that building, also, there's 35 units of memory care, and that will provide even more assistance as needed, and then 24-hour care and safety monitoring. more assistance as needed, and then 24-hour care and safety monitoring. In general, these, the senior living projects that the applicant has, it's called Mission Senior Living is the applicant, and their overall goal through these senior living projects are to create a lifestyle that promotes active and healthy living, and you'll see that through the site plan. You can see we have a courtyard, landscaped courtyard in the middle with trails and activities that the residents can participate in. Social connections through, again, through their activities planned throughout the day, personal growth and fun. They have, they provide a full calendar of daily activities for the residents. They have things like exercise programs, group outings, enrichment programs. They provide housekeeping and three chef-prepared meals per day for the whole site. So for some site-specific items, again, as Commissioner Slade pointed out, this is a 10.53 acre portion of the whole 67-acre parcel. We are proposing 260 living units. It's made up of those independent living units, the assisted living, and memory care units, and density is set by the special use permit. So, how we have looked at density is comparing the impacts of this use versus the impacts of the approved use. And I'll go through that a little bit more in detail, but we looked at the approved 16 units per acre on this multifamily site. We looked at the approved impacts of traffic, water, and sewer, and then the proposed impacts of these 260 living units. Again, they're not residential units. These are institutional uses. Those two, nursing care and the congregate care definitions are institutional uses, not residential. So they are different than a standard multifamily residential unit. But that's how we looked at these uses. And as you'll see when we go through the impacts, these have less impact on traffic, water, and sewer than the approved 16 units per acre multifamily. In talking about parking for this specific site, what we have as required is 104 spaces. So that includes the nursing use, which in Douglas County code is 41.3 spaces, and the congregate care units, the code allows for using the Institute of Transportation Engineers for their parking demand units, which is .48 spaces per unit. That's more similar to this type of use. So that's .48 spaces. The total is 140, 104 spaces. As proposed on here, there's 141 total spaces. This number came about by the applicant's other sites that they have in operation, what they've found that works for their site. So again, it's 140, 104 required based on ITE and Douglas County code versus the proposed 141. We also have proposed additional landscaping and open space than what is required. The code requires for that independent living site, 15% as open space landscape area. So the requirement is the 28,000 square feet, and proposed here is the 45,405. It includes those landscape areas around the facilities, and then also the landscape courtyard area. So this site in particular, I just wanted to point out some of the benefits of using this site for senior living facility. In general, there's a need in the county to serve the senior population. The senior services actually says that seniors in the county make up half the population, with people over 65 being at 27% of the population. So there is a need, and it meets master plan policies for providing increased housing and care opportunities, as well as options for elderly. What I wanted, it's small on the slide, but I did want to point out that small little picture on the bottom middle that shows, the blue outline is the entire current parcel, and the red outline are the two proposed parcels. I will add that this special use permit doesn't implement those, doesn't approve those two parcels. I'm just showing you the area where it is, and then we'll follow up with an application, if approved, for some sort of boundary line adjustment that would create those parcels, and then meet all of code requirements as conditioned in this special use permit. Okay, next slide. That was a lot on one slide. This is the same exterior rendering that Lucille had. The only thing I'll point out is this is just showing landscape area, that's not indicative of the landscaping on site, but it kind of shows the, that's okay, just the general concept. All right. And here's what we talked about, the comparison of uses. So we provide a comparison of traffic impacts, water, and sewer, based on what was approved in the conceptual layout that we provided with the 2020 approval of the North Douglas County specific plan, which for this 10.53 acre portion would be 168 multifamily residential units, is the impacts that we looked at. So looking, generally, traffic has that area, that portion, at 1,230 ADT versus this proposed project would have 727 ADT. Shows a 41% decrease in traffic impacts on the site. Water, I'll just, I'll tell you briefly what's up here. There's kind of a study number, as well as we looked at actual usage for a facility that's in use right now by Mission Senior Living. So the actual usage that we have shows a 66% decrease in water, and actual for sewer shows a 21% decrease in sewer. So that's how we looked at the impacts to set the density for this 260 units. I will add in there too, that their newer facilities that they're building now have even less actual water and sewer use than what we're showing on here. They're showing like this, we have at 79 gallons per day for water. The current facilities are at 57 gallons per day. So a significant decrease for water and sewer. All right, with that, I am, of course, happy to answer any questions. We have, as you noted, we have the headway transportation traffic engineer, Chris Baker is here from Manhard Consulting, and also Mike Dynas and Stacy Reed from Mission Senior Living, if you have projects, use specific questions.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone have any specific questions from Ms. Downs?
I had a question. Can we go back to the project, proposed project page? In the lower right, that area that's not labeled, is that where, because I read in the literature that there was going to be 20% under 55 at this facility? What is going in that lower right corner?
That, there's nothing specific on that lower right, the lower part of the building?
Yes.
It's all the independent living facility. I just have it labeled at the top because that's, because it fit there.
Oh, got you.
So the whole, the building, or it says assisted living on that real tiny print label, but the whole building is the independent living, assisted, assisted living use.
And am I correct about the 20% under 55 at the facility?
I have not heard that.
Any other questions?
I would like to listen to his explanation.
Okay, can I ask my question first, and then I'll bring him up?
The question of, in the previous literature that we received on the review of this project, I remember reading a section of it where 20% of the building was able to be used by 55 and under.
I understand that, but I'd like to finish with Ms. Downs first.
Absolutely.
And then we'll bring up the other. Ms. Downs?
Yes.
You have in here, under parking, that the parking demand is comparable to Mission Senior Living. Is Mission Senior Living exactly like this one? Is it larger?
So the Mission Senior Living is the applicant for this site, and they have other sites in the area, some exactly like this one, with similar size and similar scope. So they based, Mission Senior Living, the applicant, based their need for parking on their other need that they see at their other facilities.
Exactly like this one? Same size, same number of units?
I would say similar. I mean, it's been presented to me as the same. So they, I'm sure they did it based on the number of units, and what they see is their need by number of units. So if it was a little bit bigger, they might, per space, have a little more need, or smaller, a little less, but by, per unit. They proposed 141 spaces by what they felt they needed for these 260 units.
So it's an average?
I would say it's an average. They have said their other facilities are similar. I can't say that it's the exact same footprint or the exact same number of units.
I'm more of a proponent for less parking, as you can tell. For me, it is the amount of paved space and the radiant heat.
Yes.
That's my issue.
Madam Chair, just watching the applicant in the back, I think he's itching to address your question, so I think you'll get some more context on that here in a moment.
I've been watching her.
I can't watch him either, but I can imagine what's up.
Okay, you can sit down now. Sir, would you like to come forward?
I have more questions for her. Madam Chairman, is she?
We'll bring her back.
Done, okay, fine, thank you.
My name is Mike Dynas, I'm with Mission Senior Living.
Would you please sign in, and then you can talk.
Yep, I would. Again, Mike Dynas with Mission Senior Living. I would like to address the question on the parking first. These two buildings, as designed, are the exact same unit counts as two buildings that exist in South Reno, that we developed and operate currently. The only difference in the independent living is it's three stories here, due to the height restriction, and we built a four-story building in South Reno. But it's same number of units, same amount of parking, and I'm a proponent of less parking myself, but I do know the code allows for, you know, the transportation code and the county code allows it to be as low as 104. My partner and I, we've been in this business a long time, we operate these other communities, we feel that's a little bit tight. So what we're proposing is based on what we think functionally works for our buildings as we operate them. So that's how we get to the 141 units that's on the proposal. What was the other question in particular? I'm trying to remember.
That was the 20% under 55.
Yeah, the reality, we won't probably have anybody under 55 years of age. I pulled some data this morning. Our independent living project in South Reno opened in November 2020. Average age of our residents is 83.9 years of age. Our assisted living, that's identical to the assisted living and memory care here, average age is 88 years of age. I pulled, we operate eight communities in the West. I pulled all the data this morning. 10% of our residents are less than 70 years of age. So we're, the reality is, we may have a couple of people that would be on the lower end of that spectrum. We have, in our independent living, we have 131 residents, one person is 59 years of age, that's the youngest person that's in the community. So I don't know where the 20% number comes at, but that's not the way these would be operated.
Other questions? David?
I'll see if I can answer that question. I believe Nevada law states that if you operate in a facility for 55 or over, you're allowed to have a certain percentage of people that are under 55. So that might be where you pulled, they pulled that number from.
While I'm up here, any other questions operationally about who we are, what we would do operating these communities?
Jim, you look ready.
Well, I'm not sure if my questions are best addressed to this gentleman or the woman who was Ms. Downs, who was up there previously, but I'll fire away, and you guys can let me know. So you expect that, even though I agree with Commissioner Nelson, that in Douglas County code, and at over 55, you can have 20% under, but that's not your plan at all? So all of the people would be over 55, and not very many of them are apparently too close to that. Are there any other, let's start with requirements of people that might come to your facility, or is it completely on their?
The only requirements, so just a little clarification of how these are operated. Independent living is people are truly independent. We're providing services that are similar to assisted living, but we're providing no healthcare element. So it's not licensed by the state of Nevada. So it's an unlicensed project where we provide congregate living. That's the element that's in there. We provide meals, activities, security, things like that. The assisted living is actually administered through the state of Nevada through a health license that we will have to acquire prior to actually opening and taking the first residents. And so there is some restrictions. Within that license, we have to do what they're called service plans for every resident prior to admission, and on a regular basis after they're in the community. And so there are lengthy set of requirements for people that live in the assisted living and memory care.
Right. My focus, my interest here is really more on the independent congregate senior living facility. So they might be able-bodied persons, you expect many of them would be, that obviously everyone goes to the doctor, they have their own doctors, but they wouldn't need, be in need of medical care.
Most of them would, most of them would not in the independent living, but again, they have the option to work with home healthcare if they need some additional services they deem they need. We, as the operator of the community, would not be providing any healthcare services because we're not licensed. But oftentimes, in congregate, just like living at home, you can hire a third party. People can pass away in that community on hospice, but those would not be services we're providing, they would be contracting with the third party.
And in some of the, in any of these units, would you expect more than one person to be living in them?
Almost exclusively when there is, it's a husband and wife scenario.
Right, right, no, exactly. But they could be.
Yeah, for instance, in our community in Reno, there's 118 occupied units, there's 131 residents, but the second occupant is, we would call, our spouses in every scenario.
Right. 70 used to sound old to a lot of us. My father died at 71, but I have surpassed his age already, and I don't have any plans to stop driving anytime soon. In fact, the person that just gave me a ride back from the airport was telling me that her mother had been granted a driving license at the age of 100. So people are living longer and driving longer, so that's just an interesting thing, and it might affect the parking, because if you have two able-bodied 70 or 75-year-old people, rather than having .48 parking spaces per unit, they might need two parking spaces per unit. And even though we don't want to overdo the necessary amount of parking spaces, we also don't want to underdo them, so that if you have a number of people in the independent living area who are couples and have two cars, and, you know, that's a consideration. Will there be kitchens of any sort in the, what type of kitchen-type facilities will be in the independent living areas?
Independent living, there's a full commercial kitchen that gets, goes through the health department and that, where the three meals a day. Every resident that lives in there in their base rent has three meals a day in the central dining room. In their individual living units, apartments, I mean, everybody has different terminology, but it's called a kitchenette. They have six feet of cabinets with a refrigerator, a microwave, and a sink. So there's not cooking facilities, other than a microwave oven, a small .7 cubic foot microwave oven.
So they can't opt out of the congregate living, congregate dining aspect of it?
It's, it's, you know.
Part and parcel of the project.
In our business, people do operate in different ways. Ours is, it's all-inclusive.
Right.
So they can opt to not take meals if they want to, but it's included in their base rent.
Right. And how would, how would these units be marketed as far, are they ownership, or leasehold, or rental by the month, or by the year? How does that part work?
Ours is an at-will, 30-day notice, month-to-month rental.
Right. And do we have any idea of how much that would be in the independent living area?
You know, it's preliminary. It's years before we're actually open. But independent living for a studio starts about $2,600 and that includes three meals a day in a studio apartment. We have an activities program. We have an activities, somebody who runs an activities program. We have an exercise room. We have a library. We have a game room. We have a bus that they can schedule for transportation for appointments for doctors and such. And it's all the utilities included plus cable. So the only thing that a resident would have to do, this is about simplifying, right? That's the whole point of this, the social atmosphere and simplifying. The only thing that they have to provide is telephone and if they want enhanced cable services, everything else is included in there.
Right. So you will have some sort of transportation that you provide to them on a basically on-demand because somewhere in the packet it talked about, well, they can take Jack, which is the jump-around Carson thing or the Douglas County Transit, but, you know, a lot of these people I'm sure don't do much shopping. I'm sure most of them that do any shopping, if they could just get across that giant old 395 there, they could probably find everything they wanted between Walmart and Best Buy and Starbucks. But trying to cross that when only .48 cars per unit is dangerous unless, but you do have some kind of transportation for that.
Both communities will, a minimum will have 16 passenger vans with handicap access to them and then we'll have a transportation driver. It's not, it's not unlimited. There's a schedule. It'll do scheduled outings to go to Walmart, to go to the casino, to do outings and then also do doctors' rents. But we, we're in Northern Nevada. We have two communities in Reno. We operate a community in Douglas County down off of Kimmerling and one out in Fernley. And so we're trying to make our residents' lives better and we have a really good relationship with a doctor group called Geriatric Specialties. And so a lot of our residents actually work with one particular doctor that actually does house calls through the communities. And so we're trying to limit having to do as much transportation by bringing the services to the residents.
Okay, Jim, we're drifting away from the SUP. This is going into particulars of their operation, which is away from the special use permit.
Well, we need to understand the transportation that's going to be available, the roads that are necessary, the transportation, the parking, all of these things come into play and I'll try to narrow it down a little bit. So on the sewer thing, on, well, let's stay with this one for a minute. So on the parking, when it says .48 spaces per unit, you know, that's from the ITE, the Institute of Traffic Engineers. I'm sure we have some fine traffic engineers here. But that number, .48, is for senior care. It is not for independent congregant senior living. So independent care to me implies people that are more in need of medical care and less, much less likely to be driving. So I tried to, I went on the ITE website and tried to see what the options were to see if there was one for independent congregant living and senior living, but I couldn't get on the website. Apparently you need to be registered or have an engineering degree or something, but it doesn't seem like that is an accurate representation of what the independent part of this project would be. It sounds like you talked about an active and healthy lifestyle. These people are more likely to have cars, more likely to drive, some of them, not the people in the, you know, assisted living or the memory care people, but more so in the... So it just seems like that point for the, taking the number for senior care is not the best option for this group as it's been described. So I don't know if there's any other group. I don't know all the ITE categories, but do you think that's an accurate representation?
Karen Downs for the record. Yes, we did look at the, there's various different categories for ITE that don't quite match Douglas County Code. So we did try to select the best category, which was that congregant care use in ITE. They also have senior apartments, but this was one that most matched what is provided in those independent living facilities with the centralized kitchen and such. And as Mr. Dynas presented, the average age even on that independent living side, I think it was 83.9. I have to look at my number, but it is still an older age. It's not like a 55-plus apartment site. So that's how we picked that ITE use. It seemed to most correlate to this proposed independent living side. So we did look at it specifically for that portion.
Could we jump to the slide, the comparison of uses for a minute? So I think I heard you say that both water and sewer would have less use with this, but as I read that chart, it seems to say that with sewage, there'd be a 10% increase. On the water, I can read the numbers. I don't quite understand why there's such a disparity when you have 260 people living, many of them who never leave the facility, who probably use the toilet and bathtub and shower more than the average person would, certainly more than 100.
Madam Chairman, point of order. The gentleman's interjecting a whole host of his assertions and assumptions. Maybe he could just ask a question and we could get on with this?
Jim, can you be more succinct, please, so that we can let the other commissioners ask questions?
Well, you know, to just have them recite the numbers that they've printed is one thing. To try to delve down a little bit and try to understand them. I mean, seniors take baths a lot more than people under 60 do. I don't understand why the water use, so how would you explain how the water use is so much less?
So I'm going to explain where we got the numbers from. One, again, on that approved column, those are what's included in the water and sewer master plan for the North Douglas County specific plan. We estimated those based on the 168 multifamily residential units that would be approved on that multifamily residential site. On the proposed side, and what we included were two different estimates. One was from a study, kind of a generic study. It's called the Estimated Flows from Assisted Living Facilities. And that's where the, on the water, it's 150 gallons per day and on sewer, it's 100 gallons per day. That's kind of the study number that's used for these assisted living facilities. We also provided the actual usage, what these other similar sites use for this number of units. And that's the underwater, the 79 gallons per day, significantly less than the study number. And for sewer, the 71 gallons per day, significantly less than the 100 gallons per day. I used those similar facilities just to show you what the impacts would be. I included the study numbers because I felt that was a fair comparison to the North Douglas County specific plan numbers. So in reality, we would expect, again, traffic 41% decrease from the approved use, 35% decrease in water and 21% decrease in sewer.
Thank you very much. Jim, I'm going to stop you here so we can let the other commissioners ask questions. Bryce? Kirk?
Yes, Madam Chairman, thank you. As I said when I made a disclosure at the beginning of this presentation, I wanted to talk a little bit more about traffic and I'm not sure who's the most appropriate person, but I did disclose that I talked to Chris Baker, two separate short phone calls about the trip generation that's on packet page 71. And my question was how do we explain the large amount of numbers on the daily traffic anticipated and the smaller numbers on the AM and the PM time periods? I believe it's 7 to 9 AM for AM rush hour and 4 to 6 PM. So if I could have an explanation of the, the number of employees that are expected and their work patterns to further amplify the information on the trip generation in figure 15?
Sure. I'll give you my short answer and then if you need additional information, Headway Transportation is here as well. So for this site, there's three shifts of employees, none of which are in the AM peak or PM peak. And the vast majority of the trips are going to be generated by the employees. So the shifts are 6 AM to 2 PM, 2 PM to 10 PM, and then 10 PM to 6 AM. For, I'm going to see if I can do some quick math, but for the, the whole unit, the day shift has 47 employees. The evening shift has 27 employees and the night shift has seven. That's proposed, of course, anticipated number of employees. As for the trip generation number, that 727 ADT, that would come from the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Again, just to clarify, the 287 and the 440, which equals the 727 trips generated, that's a conceptual number based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers for these types of facilities.
That's correct.
Since, since your specific facility will have shifts that operate outside of the AM and the PM rush hour, those are why the figures are so small on the chart on page, page 70, 71.
That is correct. And those upper, those numbers on that line that has the 4.19 ADT, that's per thousand square feet, that's the ITE estimate for the assisted living and then the 2.21 ADT per unit is for the congregant care units.
Yes.
So all together for both of those uses was 727 ADT.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? At this time, I would like to open, thank you, the public comment portion for this public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak to this under public comment, would you please come to the podium, sign in please and state your name for the record?
Ellie Waller. Please address where the Indian Hills-Jack's Valley Community Plan policies come into play. I brought this up at the last meeting. My major concern, as you can see in my detailed comments, is the entrance off of 395. I drive that every day. I've had my neighbors drive it. I've had visitors drive it. Before this meeting, you're accelerating uphill, you're going to peak there where Best Buy is across the street. I don't want to dwell on this. Why do we need it? Other than all development for Riverwood is between a bunch of developers. I think it's dangerous. I think it should be removed. The parking issue, I'm for less parking as well. I lived up in Tahoe. The requirements for tourist accommodation units is ridiculous as well. If I were a person living there as independent, I'd be in and out of my cars by trip generation. Don't know how many other people. I'm 63, I'm a little younger than the benchmark, but we have affordable housing issues here, so that should be taken in consideration. We might have some younger people there. Furthermore, we've covered the kitchens. What else do I have in here that's really important? Is there an agreement between all the developers to get Riverwood done? If the triplexes are already in the works, where is their portion, even if it, or is it part of theirs? These things all need to be answered, I think, as a cumulative effect. The density thing is confusing. It's been stated it's confusing. Nobody's really answered the question. The code is very specific. It's 16 units per acre. If we don't call these units, we are calling, we're using them in the traffic analysis and other analysis, but not the density. So that further confuses me. Oh, you have an error. Just so you correct it, if you're going to use figure 13, it's not code 20.644, it's 20.664. I tried to find the other one when I first found it in the document. I don't need to go quote code. Everybody knows what code is here. I just think that the, the traffic is understated. The parking at .04 is nonsensable term. I understand there's modeling and formulas, but I am concerned that we really need to revisit. You're going to have physicians coming and going. You're going to have buses coming and going. I don't see where all those things are articulated in the diagram and the drawings for these other points of transportation and where they might be parked. The manager's unit, is that in the count of the 130 units? There's lots of little devils in the details and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Ellie. Is there someone else for public comment? Seeing no one rise, I will close public comment and restrict comment to the commission. And the planning commission. Bryce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a question per se. One of our jobs as planning commissioners, the primary job is to look out for the best interest of the public and the county. And, you know, this project, this zoning and use as a multifamily residential, I can't think of a better project to be built here than this one. For all the reasons that have been discussed today. It meets the growth management and housing element of the master plan. It provides much-needed housing and opportunities for care for elderly. It meets the zoning and land use requirements. I disagree with Mr. Slade with respect to comparison of uses. I think the data is there for a reason. And Ms. Downs discussed the fact that the actual usage is going to be even less. So we're reducing traffic, we're reducing water, we're reducing sewer. Now, we're increasing it because there's no development there today. I think we all understand that, that if, if no development is ever done, then we would not increase it. But we're reducing it based upon what's already approved. So I would just have a hard time finding any good reason not to approve a much-needed development in our county than this one.
Thank you. With regards to Ellie's comments about the Indian Hills-Jack's Valley Community Plan, I understand that all the issues with regards to that 395 and that intersection, most of them are the responsibility of NDOT. And the county really has no control over what is happening with that intersection and the congestion there, that we can't hold up development in that intersection simply because NDOT is dragging their feet. Is that correct, Jeremy?
Jeremy Hutchings, County Engineer, yeah, that is the jurisdiction of DOT, so I think one of Ellie's comments was about requiring a encroachment permit. I think that's, that was in the staff report. We could, we could add that to the conditions of approval. I don't know if it's necessary. There's a lot of steps along the way we could require it, but circling back to your statement, it's correct. That's the jurisdiction of DOT. We don't, we can, we can give input to the DOT, but it's, they control the jurisdiction there for permitting purposes.
Well, I see something under finding D that it talks about a northbound right turn deceleration lane is recommended on 395 based on NDOT's access management system and standards. But again, that's not something that we have jurisdiction over, is it? Isn't that up to NDOT?
Correct.
Are there any other comments from the planning commission, questions for staff or the applicant?
I, on the issue of traffic, I share some of Ms. Waller's written comments about the advisability of an entrance and exit on 395, even though I understand that's up to NDOT. You know, because we have one entrance less than half a mile away on Riverside Drive or whatever it's called. But 395 obviously is the busiest road in all of Douglas County and there have been many accidents in that area. It seems like, I'm guessing that it's required to have two entrances and exits because of the number of people living there, but Topsy Lane is much less. the number of people living there, but Topsie Lane is much less traveled than 395, and Riverside Drive, I imagine, is going to be pretty quiet, at least for a while. And even though an entrance and exit on 395 may be allowed by NDOT, I don't think that's necessarily in the best interest of the county. And we could condition them to make both entrances and exits on roads other than 395, which might be a wise thing. And I'll mention now, I guess it's all in the interpretation, but in finding G says that the special use permit must comply with all requirements within the MFR zoning district. And the MFR zoning district requires a density of only 16. And I understand the argument, and these aren't dwelling units, and there is some lack of clarity in the code when it comes to this sort of buildings. But to me, my biggest stumbling block is the density. And I support this type of facility in general. I'm okay with this location for a facility like this. And I understand the need for this type of facility, but I would prefer, on a 10.53 acre parcel, to have less units, or preferably, because they want to build 230 units, I would prefer that it be on what's required by MFR on 16 and 1/4 acres, because other stuff's going to go in there, it's going to get really crowded, the traffic's going to get worse and worse and worse. So, I think it should either be fewer units or more property, a bigger portion of that parcel number.
Any other comments from the planning commission? Do we have a motion? I will say, depending on what you are going to vote, if you are going to vote in the negative, would you please state a finding that you use to condition your vote? If it's finding A, you find will not support your vote in the negative, say, for Jim, it's finding G that he does not agree with at this point, please state it when you are voting. Okay? Are we clear?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am prepared to make a motion, and I would move that the planning commission recommend approval of development application DP 22-0104 regarding a request for a special use permit to allow the use of independent congregant living, congregant senior living community and nursing in a convalescent residential care facility in the MFR multifamily residential zoning district in the North Douglas County specific plan in the Indian Hills/Jacks Valley Community Area, Community Plan area, based on a staff report listed conditions of approval, required finding, staff presentation, and public comment.
Is there a second?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Madam Chair, before we call the vote, I would like to refer back again to the bylaws of the planning commission, item 7, decision-making, 7.1.5 absences. A planning commission member who is absent from any portion of a hearing conducted by the planning commission may vote on the matter at the time it is acted upon, provided the member has listened to a recording of the entire portion of the hearing from which he she was absent, has examined all of the exhibits presented, and states for the record that the member deems himself, herself, to be as familiar with the record and with the evidence presented at the hearing as he/she would have been had they personally attended the entire hearing. And I would note that since Mr. Slade was not here for a portion of the hearing, if he would respond, if he intends to vote, that he has listened to a recording of the entire portion of the hearing.
Jim, do you feel comfortable in voting on this item?
I do. You know, I don't know how many minutes I missed of this actual item. I think it was probably not very many. I don't know if you have a count on that, but I did read every word of the staff report, and I think, and I've looked through their presentation in written form here today, and I believe I have a grasp of all the issues. And I don't think that listening to the few minutes that I missed would change my opinion one way or the other, so I feel comfortable voting, but I'll leave that to you and the district attorney. Or you can call another recess, and I'll listen to those five or seven minutes that I missed, and then vote the same way I would vote right now.
Madam Chairman, I would ask for opinion from the district attorney's office.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Sam Taylor, Douglas County District Attorney's Office, for the record. I would note first, with respect to the amount of minutes, as Mr. Slade noted, I did make a record of that. We began the public hearing at 1:20. I think he showed up at 1:25. Also, for the most part, what was discussed during the initial parts and the part that Mr. Slade missed was what I would call introduction of this item by Ms. Rayo. A lot of that material was repeat, I would note, that was actually included in the presentation when the amendment to this specific plan came about. So, the question then becomes whether or not it's required that he recruits himself. In my humble opinion, I don't believe that would be the case on this particular vote.
Thank you. As chair, I feel comfortable with Mr. Slade voting on this item. Is there any other discussion on the motion or otherwise? Okay, we have a motion by Kirk, a second by Bryce. Can we have a roll call vote? Mark?
Aye.
Kirk, you made the motion?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Jim?
I vote nay, and I'll explain that vote. As I've said, I support this type of facility and even this facility, and I understand the need for it. But I don't believe that it meets some of the required findings, specifically G that I mentioned earlier, that it complies with all requirements within the MFR zoning district, with the emphasis being on density. And I believe that nowhere in either the staff presentation, written presentation, or in the applicant's presentation, does it ever say what the density actually is in this project. Not once. The density is, I believe, 24, I have it written here somewhere, 24.7 units per acre. That is more than 50% more than what is allowed under MFR. So, that is the main reason why I can't support this. I also question whether it meets finding B compatible with and preserves the character and integrity of adjacent developments and neighborhoods. It is surrounded on the parcel on all sides by commercial, for the most part, with a few little bits of public facilities and tourist commercial, but also by SFR 1 and SFR 8,000. So, I don't see how 24.7 units, whether they're dwelling units or residential units, or, you know, however we're going to parse that, makes that much of a difference. So, I don't believe that that finding is met. And also, in that finding is that it mitigates develop-related adverse impacts, and regardless of how much water it's going to use, we have an ongoing water problem here. We have thousands of homes already approved, and this will just add to the water challenges facing our desert environment and increasing concerns with climate change and droughts. So, I cannot support this project on such a small parcel.
So, finding G and finding B?
Correct.
Thank you. So, motion passes. I vote yes. So, motion passes, six ayes, one nay. Jim Slade voting nay, based on finding, not meeting finding G and finding B. Thank you. So, with that, I will ask for closing public comment.
Ellie Waller, I just want to be on record that I do support this kind of project. I do agree with Commissioner Slade that it's either got to, should be on 20 acres or less units. I do have another suggestion for signage, that state that this is Douglas County, so we get recognition. I live at 89705 Carson City mailing address, and so will this. I would like to see the name Douglas County for the recognition. I would also, somewhere in the future, like to understand how this will get restricted to Douglas County residents, if that's the intent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Any other public comment? I will close public comment. Thank you, Lucille and Jeremy, for your presentations and for being here. Thank you, Kate, and thank you to the applicant and all the representatives. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This meeting is adjourned.